Good evening, everyone, and welcome to tonight's City Council meeting. Could I please have Jesse Reynoso from Word of Life come forward for the opening prayer?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Let us go before the Lord. Lord, we thank you for this day. Lord, we ask, Lord God, that you would give wisdom and understanding to the mayor and to the council members and to the staff. Lord, that you would guide and direct this meeting tonight, Lord God, and give them, Lord, sound judgment and help them, Lord, to make the decisions that they have to make tonight, Lord. We ask, Lord, that you would protect the firefighters, the peace officers, Lord, that you would protect the first responders, Lord, and most of all, Lord, please protect the city of Los Banos and its residents, oh God. We thank you and we give you all the glory and all the honor. In Jesus' name we pray. Amen.
Thank you, Jesse. I'd like to call to order the April 4th meeting of the Los Banos City Council 2018. And Commander Rayner, would you lead us in the flag, please? Roll call, Director Maloney?
Maria Johnson Santos, Louis Silveira Valalta.
Here. We do have a quorum, barely, but we do. Okay? So let's go on to item number four, consideration of approval of agenda. And I would remind the council that we kind of all have to approve it or it's no-go. Pardon me? Okay. Do I have a motion? Uh, member Silveira?
Uh, Mr. Mayor, I'd like to make a motion to approve the agenda.
Okay. Mrs. Lewis?
Second.
Okay, it's been motioned by Silveira, second by Louis, to approve the agenda as stated. All in favor? Aye. Any opposition? None carried. Presentations. Proclamation declaring the month of April as Sexual Assault Awareness Month and April 25th, 2018, as Denim Day in Los Banos. And we have with us tonight Chi Wang from the Valley Crisis Center, and if you could come forward. Well, good evening, everyone, and Chi, thank you so much for coming this evening. At this time, I'd like to present this proclamation declaring the month of April as Sexual Assault Awareness Month and April 25th, 2018, as Denim Day in Los Banos. Would you like to explain just a little bit about Denim Day before I read this?
Sure, thank you. So in 1990, there was a rape case, and what happened on that rape case was there was a young individual who was sexually assaulted by her driving instructor. He took her out into the field and, you know, unfortunately sexually assaulted her. With that, the case was overturned by the Italian court, indicating that since she wore tight jeans, she consented to the sexual assault encounter. However, we wear Denim Day on the last week of April to stand in solidarity that, you know, that does not imply consent, nor is it okay. And we stand together with survivors and also victims of sexual assault.
Thank you. Whereas, sexual assault is an intolerable violent crime with public health implications for every person in the city of Los Banos as a victim, survivor, or family member, significant other, neighbor, or coworker of a victim or survivor. No one person, organization, agency, or community can eliminate sexual assault on their own. We must work together to educate our entire population about what can be done to prevent sexual assault, support victim survivors and their significant others, and increase support for agencies providing services to victim survivors. The Valley Crisis Center has led the way in Los Banos in addressing sexual assault by providing 24-hour hotline services to victims, survivors, and their significant others, responding to emergency calls, offering support and comfort to those impacted by sexual assault during medical exams, criminal proceedings, and empowering those impacted by sexual assault to chart their own course for healing. Ending sexual assault in Los Banos must include active public and private efforts to end sexual violence, sexual assault violence, in collaboration at the Valley Crisis Center, including conversation about what sexual assault violence is, how to prevent it, how to help survivors connect with crucial counseling or other support services, and how every segment of society can work together to better address sexual violence. Staff and volunteers of sexual assault victims work year-round to encourage every person in Merced to end sexual violence and support survivors by providing prevention, education, survivor empowerment, information to schools, churches, civic organizations, as well as medical, mental health, law enforcement, education, and criminal justice personnel regarding sexual assault issues. Valley Crisis Center has set an important example by forging collaborative relationships between service agencies and organization services to improve the quality of service for those most profoundly and directly impacted by sexual violence, thus setting an important example for how the rest of the community might work together to speak out and find solutions to sexual violence. The Valley Crisis Center requests public support and assistance as it continues its effort to bring real hope and feeling from the tragedy of sexual violence to create a future where all women, men, children can live free from violence and exploitation. Now therefore be proclaimed that the mayor and the city council members proclaim the month of April 18th as Sexual Assault Awareness Month in Merced County and proclaim April 25th as Denim Day in order to support sexual assault prevention awareness efforts throughout the county. And I would tell everyone, you are a mandated reporter. If you see something is wrong, it's not right in your heart, it's not right. Report it, please. Thank you.
Thank you, everybody, and thank you, Mayor, for your support. You, the city of Los Banos should be very proud of yourself. We've been working really hard in the last several years to bring sexual assault examination back to Merced County, and we are very excited to let you know that Sutter Memorial here in Los Banos has opened that door for us, and we are now conducting sexual assault examination here in Merced County. And that's very important because prior to that, we've been taking individuals out of county. These cases sometimes last five to six hours for individuals to go through the examinations. But since it's in Los Banos, our time has shortened it, and the individuals that are wanting to proceed with their investigation has really increased. And you should all be very proud of you for doing that. Thank you, Los Banos.
Okay. Tonight, the volunteers we have here tonight are animal shelters, is that correct? And vital, is that correct? Anyone else from any other? Yes, sir. Oh, yes. Habitat? Fantastic. Okay? All right. Would you all come forward, please? Having had contact, okay? Having had contact, well, I'm going to mention Habitat anyway, having had contact with Habitat, providing homes for individuals who want to work for a home is a great tribute to the people who volunteer in this community. Thank you so much and keep up the work that you're doing. We also have the Volunteers for Animals at the Animal Shelter, and I have to tell you that all the dogs that we've adopted have come from that animal shelter, and Kathy Wilbur has taken special care of us all these years, and I can't thank you and the volunteers enough for what you've done. It's, it gets to be really tough walking in an animal shelter and seeing all those little four-legged animals, and all of them want to be adopted. It's quite a sight because if you know, if anyone who cares for dogs basically is, in a psychologist's view, is a person, is probably a real decent person, and it's going to treat human beings the same way. So I would expect nothing less from this group up here. The way they care for animals is probably the way they care for human life also. So thank you again for what you do. And would you please, would someone please introduce or introduce yourselves from your group? You sure can, Grover. Come on in.
As Mayor Valalta mentioned, Kathy Wilber has been with the volunteers since probably its inception, I imagine, right? About 15 years ago. And Lynn Cadea is a stalwart also. She's practically there almost every day. Kathy's there at least six days a week, twice a day. Art Morgan, very helpful, two days a week. I'd like to put out a call for volunteers from the residents. We are 11 of us, there are 11 of us, plus two paid staff who help us get out the animals to keep them from being put down. But I'd like to encourage students also to apply for volunteer position here with the animal shelter. You must be 18 for liability purposes, but with the summer coming up, I'd like to encourage particularly students to apply, and maybe you could help us two hours a week, maybe two hours a month. We'll take anything we can get from you. So please, think about it, and older residents as well. We would really appreciate your help. I'd like to give Kathy and Lynn a break here and there. They really, they really make us who we are. We are the only ones who practically speak for the animals here in the shelter, so, and it's not a friendly place. It's very scary. Not only are the animals detached from their previous owners, but they're in a very noisy place. It's not comfortable for them at all. So I'd like to encourage more volunteers to help us, and we'll get her done. Thank you.
Can you hear me? Is this thing working? Everybody here? Yeah. Okay. Another group closely affiliated with is the vital group, police volunteers. And they will tell you in a minute some of the duties that they do and how proud I am of the Volunteers for Animals and also the police volunteers. The volunteers go out, they help to help manage the city along with the police. They are not sworn officers, but they do have two eyes, and they do a lot of paperwork for the city and free up the officers to go out and do other things. And I would tell you that if you want to drive a patrol car, you can join the group, and then they'll let you take it out after you have had some training, and it's a great experience. So I can tell you that this group is very dedicated. Some of them have been with the city many, many years, and if you're interested in volunteering for vital or the animal shelter, we would just greatly appreciate it. We'll take good care of you. But I have to tell you that the background check is just as stringent as becoming a police officer for the animals and for the vital volunteers because you have access to very sensitive information. So with that, I would like to introduce the spokesperson for the vital volunteers, Sandra Gonzalez, and then we'll have the individual vital volunteers introduce themselves.
Thank you, everybody. We are very honored and pleased to be here today. I'm Sandra Gonzalez, and I am the president. I joined back in 2009, and I have to say it's one of the most beautiful things I did to do what I do every day. Like we mentioned, it's an hour or two hours, six hours, eight hours, it's just what you could put, and I'm going to go down the line. Would you like to introduce yourself, please?
Early Leonardo, 2004.
Tom Neem, whenever we started. Then I left a while. Very happy to be back.
Pat Leonardo, 2006.
John Gonzalez, 2015.
Jim Maderis, 2016.
Nancy Fernandez, joined in 2005.
Francis Leon, 2004.
Colin Tambury, ex-Bravo post-veteran, ASAMP officer, and I've been around 15 years.
So like I said, we have about 22 vital members, and some of us aren't here today because of other reasons, but we are here today and we are honored to be here. And all of us hold a little title. I mean, I do lots of work out in the community with my husband, John, and Pat and Larry, they are also a couple. They do plenty of work with also events and parades, and we do a lot of school stuff. We enjoy going out and do fingerprinting with the kids. So whoever would like to join, we have our vice president here. As busy as he is, he still makes it a point to be here. Jim's with us. Francis is one of our honorary old timers that has just been, well, that's how I say, she has helped us so much. And everybody here, Colleen does scanning, and we do a lot of fun activities, but it's just a matter of getting involved. And I'll tell you, Mr. Mayor said the background check is intense. I won't, you know, fib, you have to be clean in order to participate in what we do and what we see and how we take action. It's well done. And the cars is fun, but I won't, it's just to, you know, be another set of eyes and ears. That's what we are. Well, we have a very, very good member, Mr. Mike Vialta is one of our members too, and as much as he is scattered left and right through all the things, you are very well thanked for what you do.
Thank you for the training, yeah.
Yeah, you're a partner in crime here. Nancy helped you. So anyways, with that said, I am so eager to be here in front of all of you, and please, if you need any help, we will have a downtown spring fair coming up next Saturday, and we will be out there, and we'll be giving, you know, packets, literature, we have goodies that we give out, and just come out and talk to us, and we would love to, you know, find out from you guys, whoever's interested. Okay, thank you.
We have a few more presentations. I see two of the groups are holding checks, and I would like someone to explain those checks from each group. Who'd ever like to do that?
I have no idea why.
This is a symbolic check, and these are hours, Mr. Mayor, that have been calculated since 2003, I want to say. So can you imagine for all the time that we do, for, I mean, everybody, we have all different agencies have put in time, this is what these checks amount to if we were paid, correct? I mean, literally, this is the amount that it comes to, and it's incredible to think that these are, this is a lot of money. So the city, yes, 2018 and 2000, oh, both of them are 18? Oh, 2017, thank you. Yes, so those are the hours.
This is per year.
Per year.
Per year. So $92,455 worth of volunteer time, that would be the equivalent that the city would have had to pay out, and $60,904 for the Volunteers for Animals. So, you know, well over $140,000, close to $150,000 for what's been done, and we can't thank you enough because that's just another $150,000 that we can apply someplace else. And I know the volunteers understand that. So thank you, thank you so much. Commander Rayner?
Okay, thank you, Mr. Mayor. I get to be, I get to have the privilege and honor of being the police department representative that gets to come here tonight and to formally thank you all for what you do. So whether you are on the Los Banos Volunteer for Animal side, all the great work that you do with animals, reuniting lost pets with their owners, finding great new homes for the animals that come into the shelter, the many, many duties that you all do at the shelter that we are so thankful for, or whether you are on the vital side, participating in things like Project Right-of-Way reports, helping at our many events, community events in town, working traffic, standing out in the cold or the heat at barricades and intersections, I want to thank you all very much for what you do. We really appreciate it. We could not provide some of the services that you all provide with our staffing because there's just not as many of us to go around. So I want to thank you all for what you do, and it's been said a few times tonight, but for those of you who are out there who are looking for a great organization to belong to, I've got two right here. Come and join our ranks and volunteer your time. There's nothing better than investing in your community. So I want to thank you all very much for what you do. And on the vital side, I'm sorry, I'll try to quit because I know those signs are, you're holding them up, but the vital members, they, every year, they vote for a volunteer member of the year. So in, for 2017, 2018, the members voted, and I would like to call up a member, John Gonzalez up here. So your members can see you. So John, I've known John for a little while. I've had the opportunity of interacting with him at the police department. John does a lot of work for Project Right-of-Way. He's out there, and he's one of the ones that drives one of our volunteer police cars, and he's out working in the Right-of-Way project, which is a project that looks for abandoned vehicles and things of that nature. So John does a lot of work in that. He's been a member since 2015, right? And John is just a great guy. Every time you talk to him, he's got a positive attitude. He's very easy to get along with, and he's very hardworking. But one of the members wrote something, you mind if I, it was Sandra. So Sandra wrote this about John, and I really thought he was nice, so I'm going to read it, okay? It said, "John Gonzalez was born, raised, and graduated from Gilroy." That's okay. "John's been a resident of Los Banos for 27 years. He and his wife raised two children. John worked for the city of Los Banos and is active in the community with the Los Banos Police Program, vital for seven years, several years now. He enjoys any amount of time providing assistance to law enforcement and staff for a safer place to live, work, and play. No matter what act of kindness he provides, it's satisfying for John, and I couldn't agree more." So I would like to present you with this. It's Los Banos Volunteer for, I'm sorry, I'm sorry, wrong program. Volunteer- Volunteer of the Year for the vital program, Outstanding Volunteer Services 2017, 2018, to John Gonzalez. And then there's also this Volunteer of the Year pin. So, thank you very much. Is there anything that you would like to say?
Yes, I'd like to thank the volunteers for voting for me, and I love what I do. And hopefully I can do it for many more years. Thank you very much.
Wait a minute, introduce the family.
Oh, yes. Yeah, and I've got my mom and my dad right here, and my two daughters back on the backside over there, and then my wife. Actually, everybody's family. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Okay, let me read this proclamation. Proclamation recognizing volunteers of the Los Banos Police Department during the National Volunteer Week. And by the way, the animal shelter and the police volunteers are under the direction of our police chief, Commander, Commander Rayner, or Police Chief Breezy and Commander Reina. Whereas, one of America's greatest national resources is its volunteers and the human resources they devote towards health, productive, and humane society. Throughout the year, local citizens sign up to assist the Los Banos Police Department vital volunteers, interacting to advance law enforcement and the Los Banos Volunteers for Animals. Since its inception of the vital program in 2003, members have donated over 41,182 hours of service to the city of Los Banos. Vital volunteers provide services such as information and fingerprinting booths during events, crowd and traffic control, park and school safety patrol, graffiti abatement, evidence management, statistical reporting, and taxi licensing, DUI checkpoint assistance, clerical assistance, and emergency callouts. The vital volunteers have been called at all hours to assist with major problems such as power outages, fires, gas leaks, locating missing children, and much more. The Los Banos Volunteers for Animals open the local animal shelter every Saturday from 12:00 PM to 4:00 PM for adoptions and work in conjunction with animal rescues to transfer dogs and cats whom have not yet found a home. Whereas in 2017, the Los Banos Volunteers for Animals donated 4,100 hours of service to the city of Los Banos. Each year, these volunteers give freely of their time and energy, only asking for a smile and a thank you for their many service hours of, hours of service. Now therefore be it proclaimed that the mayor and the city council members of the city of Los Banos recognize and take great pleasure in honoring the vital volunteers and the Los Banos Volunteers for Animals during National Volunteer Week, April 15th through the 21st, and convey sincere gratitude and appreciation for the dedication, selflessness, and compassionate efforts. Thank you all so much for what you do. Okay, I'm going to present this to Commander Reina, and then we'll have copies for the vital and the volunteers for animals. So thank you so much. Commander, anything else? Okay, thank you. Okay, thank you. Okay. Could I have all the fire department employees and volunteers come forward, please? Chief? This is Mason Hurley, our fire chief, and he's going to tell us a little bit about the fire department.
Thank you, Mayor. We also would like to recognize our volunteers, the Los Banos Volunteers Fire Department, a group of individuals that have been around for over 128 years. The Los Banos Volunteer Fire Department was the very first city organization within our, within our community. So we have a long history. If you haven't seen it, we have a really nice history book that we put together in the last couple of years. Rochelle on the back, she was a major part of that. So if you'd like to come see it, come by the office, we'd be happy to share it with you. Our volunteers spend countless hours every year, every month, every week, doing the training that is needed, that is required. It's not just because they are, they want to be a volunteer. They are required to do what they do. They are required to provide over 220 hours of training, of different types of training fire, within the fire service annually. And that's just a small portion of it. They're, they're involved with the fundraisers that we do around the community, such as Fill the Boot, the Kids' Day, the Fresno Paper. They also, they will be around for whatever is needed within the community. We help with other organizations in the community to help cook. You'll see them down at the, at the fire station on Christmas Eve, cooking chicken and cooking, preparing meals for the Christmas Eve dinner that serves over 500 people during that, during that event. So our volunteers are very important to us. They also are a source for providing quality employees. If you look at up here, we have three volunteers, three of 27 that we actually currently have at this point. The, the, the numbers have gone high and low, and we're at a pretty good number right now. We've had, in the last two years, we've had 12 new volunteers join our department that required, requires them to do the training. We, they are also, we have four of those individuals involved in the firefighter, state, state firefighter, one academy, and also EMT classes. So they're out there working hard and being involved. But all that training and all that education and all that involvement allows us to hire and be prepared to have people like what we have on the paid staff here, who currently everyone up here was a volunteer. So what I'd like to do is hand the mic down, and I'd like you to introduce yourself, how long you've been with the department, and basically when you joined the department as a volunteer.
My name is Aaron Barajas. I joined in January of this year.
Good evening, my name is Rob Barajas. I've been a member since '04, and I'm a current officer of the department.
My name is Kevin Spencer, and I joined in November of 2017.
My name is Daniel Freeman. I joined in June of 2004.
Brad Halian, joined in June of 2002.
Fernando Garcia, June of 2001.
Roger Hughes, June of 2001.
Robert, Robert Strauk, 19, no, 2000, 2001. Been a while. Probably 93, Robert. And I, I was a, started as a volunteer in August of 1990. So I want to say thank you to, to our volunteers, thank you to our paid staff who work hand in hand with these individuals, day in and day out, and we couldn't do it without them. So thank you very much.
And I will say, put a plug in for Los Banos High School. A lot of Los Banos graduates here that came back and decided to make Los Banos their home, and I can't tell you how proud I am. That's, that's, that's the ultimate gift you can give to your community after being educated here is to stay here. So thank you so much. And, and those who weren't born here, thank you so much for making Los Banos your home. Because that, that is just so important to have a consistent fire department, consistent staff, and, and it speaks for itself as to why, in Mr. Strauk's case, why he stayed, he's the guy with the gray hair. So, like I'm talking, yeah. So at this time, I'd like to read this proclamation. We need bigger lettering. Okay. Proclamation recognizing volunteers for the Los Banos Fire Department during National Volunteer Week. One of America's greatest national resources is its volunteers and the human sources, the human resources they devote towards a healthy, productive, and humane society. Throughout the years, dedicated local citizens have given their time to assist the Los Banos Volunteer Fire Department. Since its inception, the Los Banos Fire Department in 1890, members have donated countless hours of service to the city of Los Banos, County of Merced, and the state of California. When did we hire our first paid person? 88, 88. So for the first 98, 98 years, we were an all-volunteer fire department. The Los Banos Volunteer Firefighters have been called out for service for over 128 years, providing emergency services such as firefighting, technical rescue, emergency medical response, various other public service callouts, and much more. The Los Banos Volunteer Firefighters are required to train over 240 hours a year, in addition to the required emergency medical services, EMS, and hazardous materials training. Each year, these volunteers give freely of their time and energy, only asking for a smile and a thank you for their selfless dedication to helping others in time of need. Now therefore be it proclaimed that the mayor and the city council members of the city of Los Banos recognize that and take great pleasure in honoring the Los Banos Volunteer Fire, Fires Department during National Volunteer Week, April 15th through the 21st, 2018, and convey sincere gratitude and appreciation for the dedication, selflessness, and compassionate efforts. As for all our public safety, paid and volunteers, this city is what it is because of the safety that they provide, the coverage they provide, the community service that they provide, and, and I can't tell you just the downright friendship that they show for each other. It's like a brother and sisterhood with a fire and police. It's always been that way. It's not going to stop, and that's the reason why these individuals are so successful, is because they are a family, they stay a family, and that family protects Los Banos. Thank you, Chief. Guys, thank you, thank you, thank you. Thank you again, guys. Oh, here, you take this.
Thank you.
Let the record show that Mrs. Santos with a new hairdo, very nice, arrived at 7:15. Okay, let's go on to public forum. Members of the public may address the city council members on any item of public interest that is within the jurisdiction of the city council, which includes agenda and non-agenda items. No action will be taken on nine agenda items, and speakers are limited to a five-minute presentation. Detailed guidelines are posted on the council chamber informational table. When you approach the podium, please state your name and city of residence. Is there anyone who wishes to speak at the public forum? Come on forward.
Good evening, my name is Marlene C. Miller Alves. I have a few, one, first of all, I'd like to thank everybody. I've used the fire department many a times in emergency situations. They are very professional, and I really appreciate this. Also, the animal control, I've used them also on a lost dog. They are also very professional. Many thanks to them. The reason I'm stepping forward today is there's a few issues I want to address. Number one, well, also the sexual abuse, one, I'm grateful that we do have that. I myself have suffered four sexual assaults, and only because as strong as I am and maybe quick-witted, I was able to come out of it. Now, one step further is that I think of Crisis Center not only should have only the significant other, but also any type of violence. I appeared at them and I asked for assistance, and I was unable to do it. It was family members. And right now, it's only significant others. I think that issue has to be addressed. Another issue that has to be addressed is, say, the code enforcements. They're coming on too strong for these people. I've witnessed on Ice Street of all the tearing down of signs and everything, issues that actually were quite, very intruding on the business owners, where even an employee even quit their business because of this. Too much enforcement in here, too much force. We need to be easier on people. We need to bring people in, invite people in, and discuss what they really want to do. Just don't enforce the issues because you feel it has to be done. I read the paper about the cars, about automobiles. You know, people are combining their families. People are in great stress right now of jobs and everything. If you cut down on their autos, well, there may be three people, adults that are working to survive in that home. And if you cut down on their autos, what will you do? You'll actually cut down on them not being able to go to work. Another thing is I have an issue at my own home of code enforcements that I must bring up the fences. I am redoing my business. I'm a commercial artist, I'm coming out of retirement, and I'm building fences and everything that I have to do and have to be done by the sixth. Well, sir, if I don't do it by the sixth, I'm going to be fined $2,000. I've been working night and day, digging post holes, and then I'm receiving this on today, a warning to stop work. Everything that I'm doing on that property is legal. Now, are they going to stop me from doing what I have to do by the sixth and still get paid, still have to be charged $2,000? There is too much force here. I request, Mayor, that you put a hold on this, not only for my personal thing, but other people too. We are having a very hard time. What really needs to be looked at is look at the graffiti. My car broke down last month, graffiti on Ice Street. Oh, it was absolutely ridiculous. I reported it in. You see, I had to walk that area, and it was coming down sundown. And the messages on that darn apartment that I knew it was, somebody was going to be murdered. And the issue is, it would only, it would have to take 30 days to bring it down. Talking to people in the area, they had side guns, they had everything waiting for people to come. Those are the issues you must address. And beautification, beautification downtown, release the water in the drip system so we can get this town beautiful. Remove the gum. You want it to be beautiful, then let's get it beautiful. Stop offending people. And that's what I have to say. Thank you.
Are there anyone else who'd like to speak at the public forum?
Okay. Hi, my name is Jennifer Loa. I'm with Habitat for Humanity. I'm a board member and secretary, and I just wanted to say thank you for coming out to our home dedication on February 24th for the Viera family. Mayor Velata, you were there, and Scott Silvira, council member, remember? Just wanted to say.
Mrs. Lewis was there also. Mrs. Lewis, you're there also?
Thank you. If I missed anyone, please forgive me, it was a very busy day. But thank you for coming out. I appreciate, and on behalf of Habitat, we appreciate your presence. I also wanted to invite any council members or anyone else interested to our Women Build event. It's happening from May 9th to May 12th. And what it is, is it's an annual event, it's the seventh year that we've done it, where we ask women from the community to come out and do some construction work, where you're in kind of like a safe environment, where you're able to learn new skills to help you build houses for our community members, but also you can take those skills back home with you and work on your own homes. So anybody is invited, even if you're a male, even though it's called Women Build, anyone is invited to come out and join the fun and help out. And you can do it during the week from the 9th, or our big day is on Saturday, the 12th. So just want to extend an invitation and ask everybody to come out and support us if you'd like. I have some flyers.
It's April 12th, correct?
Yes.
Okay.
No, I'm sorry, May.
On May 12?
I have some flyers for the event, if I could leave them here with you.
Please.
Is that okay?
Please, if you would give them to the city clerk, she can then distribute them to us.
Okay, thank you, guys. That was it.
Thank you. And thank you for all, both of you, for all that you do in, like I mentioned before, I mean, you came here for volunteers, and, and we're so happy to recognize you. And I'd asked Ashley at one time to kind of provide me with a history of Habitat for Humanity, because we would love to honor you separately for, for what you provide for this community.
Well, thank you.
All right?
We'll get on that.
Thank you. Okay?
I'd like to introduce my name.
Sure, please.
Gary Munoz, I'm on the board of directors.
Our street is so happy. It's, uh, traffic calming devices that have slowed people down. They have, um, they are now able to do the speed limit, which is twenty-five miles an hour, and some cases even slower. Um, the way public works, uh, set to two sets of cushions, it doesn't give them enough time to accelerate, so they're, they're at our speed limit, which we're just so thankful for.
So you're happy with the configuration?
Yes, very, very happy.
Okay, that's what we want to hear?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes, because the, the way they're set between the two sets, there's no time to accelerate.
Okay.
And then we also have the two stop signs at Mercy Springs and at Meadowlark. So it's, it's working beautifully. Um, surprisingly, there's a minimal amount of noise and air pollution to this. Our, um, bedroom is on the side where this first set of speed cushions are, and the speed cushions are like half a house from us. No noise, it doesn't wake us up, it's not, you know, it's not intrusive whatsoever. Um, the signs are placed very well. They give very clear warnings that there are speed cushions ahead, um, and there's also reflectors on the speed cushions. Um, the neighborhood, as far as I know, nobody has complained, everybody is very appreciative and grateful to have these cushions, because we had quite a few problems before with speeders. Um, our neighborhood is a homeowners association where a lot of people don't park on the streets because they have maybe just one car. So it was a wide enough street where we would get people racing side by side down that, that stretch, so that has stopped that. Um, I don't think anybody's worried about property values either. I don't think the property values have declined at all because of these. Matter of fact, this enhancement, I think, has, is one of the factors if you want to sell a house. Um, no, not as many police calls. We used to, a lot of our neighbors used to call the police for speeders, and that has been, uh, very minimal also, if none, I don't, I don't know. Uh, I haven't, I talked to Chief Mason, and I, I mean, Chief Hurley, and, um, I'm not sure about the, uh, fire trucks. Um, I have not seen any emergency, uh, coming down our street, so I haven't seen how it's actually working, but I think there's enough space in between this, three sets of cushions where they can go with, with no problem. And so hopefully it doesn't hinder your response time, but maybe it eliminates some accidents, too, so, you know, the, um, the stop signs also are very helpful at Meadowlark and Quail, and also at Mercy Springs and Quail. So, between the stop signs and the speed cushions, we're good. We're good with the posted speed limits.
Thank you.
Thank you.
It's good to hear, thank you. I don't think the city wants to be intrusive on anyone, I think we want to come up with a fair set of, uh, regulations, and it's so, it, it's so nice to hear that, uh, that something has worked, because that was our second attempt at speed bumps, and, and now we can, uh, if that works, that makes the model for, uh, uh, for what we need to go by. So, thank you so much. Okay, is there anyone else who'd like to speak at the public forum? Uh, different subject?
Yeah.
Okay.
Oh, Mr. Mayor? I volunteer my time over for, uh, MacArthur Apartments over on F Street. These ladies here, I call, I call bingo for them. I've been doing this for about ten years, and, uh, they seem to be complaining about the traffic on F Street. The traffic doesn't slow down. We have some of these senior citizens with, uh, walkers trying to cross the street to get to their car, and the traffic is just too fast in that area, so they asked me to come in and speak.
Okay.
And they would like to have, uh, some kind of control, even speed bumps, at least two, in that area in front of, about MacArthur Apartments.
Okay. Would you please do me a favor?
Yes.
And, and either talk to Commander Reyna or Chief Breezy, set up an appointment with them, uh, because everything that we do, we have a traffic safety committee that reviews, um, um, all these requests, and, and we have to go through them, and that's a process we've set up. So the first thing you could do is meet with Commander Reyna or Chief Breezy and talk to them about the situation.
All right, thank you.
And see what we can do.
All right.
Okay, thank you.
Thanks very much.
Okay, is there anyone else who'd like to speak at the public forum? Not seeing or hearing anyone, I will now close the public forum, and we will go on to item seven, consideration of approval of consent agenda. Item on the consent agenda are considered to be routine, and we voted on in one motion, unless we move from the city, uh, consent, from the consent agenda by a city council member. And tonight we have, Director Maloney?
Items on the consent agenda are as follows. Warrant numbers two-zero-nine-seven-three-one through two-zero-nine-nine-three-two in the amount of nine-hundred-and-twenty-four-thousand-three-hundred-and-eighty-one dollars and eleven cents. Minutes for the March seventh, two thousand and eighteen city council meeting, minutes for the March twenty-first, two thousand and eighteen city council meeting, measure P Oversight Committee report, and the items are to be approved as submitted.
Okay, is there anyone who would like to remove a, uh, an agenda item for discussion? Okay, if not, do I have a motion? Mrs. Santos?
I'd like to make a motion to approve the agenda as stated.
Okay, Mr. Silveira?
I'll second.
Motion by Santos, second by Silveira to approve the consent agenda as stated. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposition? None carried. Public hearing. If you challenge a proposed action described herein in court, you may be limited to raising only those issues you or someone else raised at the public hearing described herein or in written correspondence delivered to the city at or prior to the public hearing. Public hearing. To receive public comment and consideration of repealing and amending in its entirety Chapter One of Title XI of the Los Manos Municipal Code Regarding Business Licenses. And we're gonna go to City Attorney Vaughn.
Thank you, Mayor. City Council, the rest of the audience that stayed. I see that I packed the house once again. Um, this is actually the third time this has been to you. If you recall, we, about six weeks ago, you introduced this ordinance, um, and we had some, uh, delay and brought it back to you and reintroduced it, and so we're here for a third time, and tonight is the second reading and adoption. I'm not gonna go into a lot of detail, because we've done that through a PowerPoint and two presentations thus far. Suffice it to say that this is a rewrite of the current business license, um, ordinance in the city. Um, it's a long time overdue. I call it the new improved business license ordinance, and it's really geared at, uh, beefing up the regulation part of the ordinance. It's always been called a regulation or regulatory ordinance, but it really hasn't had the tools to do the regulation. So, uh, it's got a twofold purpose, partly to regulate those folks that are doing business within the city of Los Manos, but also to act as a registry so that we can use that information in our efforts for economic development. Uh, so the, the ordinance is comprehensive, uh, has six or seven parts, and it's, goes through the process. We hope it's user-friendly to the business community, uh, should they have any questions about, uh, their business licensing, and I don't think I'm going to repeat everything that we've already talked about in the last two public hearings, and I'll leave it at that. If the council has any questions regarding the ordinance, I'm here to answer those, but we'd ask that you waive the second reading and adopt, uh, the ordinance as presented.
Okay. Council members, any questions at this time? Okay, I'll open a public hearing if that's okay. Uh, so at this time, I'd like to open a public hearing on ordinance number one-one-six-three, an ordinance of the city council of the city of Los Manos, repealing and amending in its entirety Chapter One, Title XI of the Los Manos Municipal Code Regarding Business Licenses. Is there anyone who wishes to speak? Not seeing or hearing anyone, I will now close the public hearing, bringing it back to council level, and, uh, Mr. Silveira?
Uh, yes, Mr. Mayor. If there are no questions from the council, I'd like to make a motion to waive the second reading of ordinance number one-one-six-three, an ordinance of the city council of the city of Los Manos, repealing and amending in its entirety Chapter One of Title XI of the Los Manos Municipal Code Regulating Business Licenses. Is there anyone who wishes to speak?
Not seeing or hearing anyone, I will now close the public hearing, bringing it back to council level, and, uh, Mr. Silveira?
Uh, yes, Mr. Mayor. If there are no questions from the council, I'd like to make a motion to waive the second reading of ordinance number one-one-six-three, an ordinance of the city council of the city of Los Manos, repealing and amending in its entirety Chapter One of Title XI of the Los Manos Municipal Code Regulating Business Licenses.
Mrs. Lewis?
Second.
Okay, it's been motioned by Silveira, second by Lewis, to waive the second reading of ordinance number one-one-six-three. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposition? None carried. And let's go back to Mr. Silveira?
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to make a motion to adopt, uh, ordinance number one-one-six-three as read by title.
Mrs. Lewis?
Second.
Okay, it's been motioned by Silveira to, for the adoption of ordinance number one-one-six-three, and seconded by Lewis. All in favor? Oh, excuse me, roll call vote, sorry. Director Maloney?
Johnson Santos?
Yes.
Lewis?
Yes.
Silveira?
Yes.
Volata?
Yes. Carried.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, item number nine, advisement of public notices, and we have no reports. Okay, let's go on to city manager's report. Alex?
Uh, just, uh, thank you to the fire volunteers, animal services volunteers, um, and vital volunteers. Appreciate, uh, your time and dedication to this community, uh, what you do is, is, um, good work, so thank you to all those volunteers. Uh, also want to, uh, thank and recognize and congratulate Mr. Gonzalez, uh, for his recognition as vital volunteer of the year, so, uh, thank you, Mr. Gonzalez, and, uh, nice work to all the volunteers.
Okay, thank you so much. Okay, let's go on to item eleven, city council member report, and tonight we'll start with, uh, Mr. Silveira, your mic's already on.
Mr. Mayor, I have a couple announcements for tonight.
Okay.
First thing is, is the Los Manos Arts Council presents the Grammy Award-winning Okey-Doke this Sunday, April the eighth, two thousand and eighteen, at one PM. Children sixteen and under are twelve dollars, adults are fifteen. A family pack of five is fifty dollars before, well, that's before April first. Um, again, this is, it's at the Ted Filasco Arts Center, eleven-oh-five Fifth Street in Los Manos, and so when folks say that there's not a lot of things to do in Los Manos, the Arts Council's working really hard at bringing some, uh, different and interesting types of entertainment, so we'll have a Grammy Award-winning, um, Okey-Doke will be there on April eighth, this Sunday. Next Monday, April ninth, um, I will be attending a public meeting on, that the school district is putting on, on, um, the new school farm at Pacheco High School. So they're moving, they're moving through the process, uh, the funding, um, to, to my knowledge has been secured, uh, but they're going to have a community meeting, uh, for neighbors to come out, so that's next Monday, April the ninth. It'll be at Pacheco High School, and I'm not sure, it's in one of those rooms that are right there in the front of the school, um, and they will be, be discussing the future, um, school farm built there at Pacheco High School. And then I just wanted to remind everybody, uh, that the May Day Fair is right around the corner, it is this year, April second through the sixth. I'm, excuse me, May second through the sixth. Thank you, Mr. Vaughn.
Okay, anything else?
That's it.
Okay, thank you. All right, let's go on to Mr. Freya, who's not here, let's go on to Mrs. Santos. And, hang on, let me find the, uh, whoops, there we go.
Thank you very much, Mr. Mayor. Um, I would like to, um, the volunteers for coming ready, unfortunately, schedule- All was figured out is no longer figured out, but, um, I would also like to thank our volunteers, it was wonderful seeing everyone here, and I, as, I haven't fortunately invol- um, volunteered, I've volunteered for too many, uh, or been involved in a, uh, too many major volunteer, uh, volunteering opportunities. Um, I have volunteered, and it's really a good feeling, and I hope to see a lot of our younger population doing so, because, um, just taking the pride in our city would definitely help, hopefully fix some of the problems with this, um, the issues that we might be having with some of our younger crowd as well, so, just a statement of that, but thank you.
Thank you. Okay, let's go on to Mrs. Lewis.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Um, I'd, I'd just like to report to the community that this past Friday, um, there was the installation and luncheon ceremony for Jasmine Carr, I believe is the pronunciation of her last name. She's the new general postmaster here in Los Manos, um, a lovely lady, a lot of accolades, and to hear how she came up through the ranks and acquired the position here was extraordinary. Her children were there, and, uh, she just has a lovely family, and I'm looking forward, uh, to the city working with her on any issues that may come up, but, um, I'm really happy to see that we have someone here in Los Manos who cares about our post office and cares about the city of Los Manos. So, thank you to Jasmine for, uh, her dedication, and congratulations on her appointment. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. Okay, uh, today, uh, as I was watching the news, uh, they'd reported that today's the, the fiftieth anniversary of the assassination of Dr. Martin Luther King, and someone who advocated for peace, and, uh, uh, all his life was, was centered around peaceful movements, as was many others who, uh, sacrificed their lives, uh, for this movement, so, uh, just in remembrance to him, uh, for all his accomplishments. You know, tonight we celebrated volunteerism, and Mrs. Silveira just mentioned that the, the Arts Council, the Arts Council volunteer for the, for the library, um, uh, all the Ag Booster groups, uh, athletic groups, i- it's just endless, uh, Catholic school groups, uh, uh, it just, I, it's, it's hard to, to imagine this town without volunteerism, and there is so much of it, and the amount of money that's raised each year is staggering. For all the funding that is raised and all the good deeds, uh, we have the PAL organization, uh, now we're gonna have Boys and Girls Club, we're gonna have so many things happening in Los Manos, but the reason it happens is because of volunteerism. The programs that you have at the Arts Council are provided by the, uh, by, by, uh, Los Manos Arts Council volunteers. It takes money to put on these programs, and people are not doing it because they want to promote themselves. They are doing it because they want to promote their group and the good works of that group. So when you support and you attend these functions, you are supporting these groups and hopefully having a good time and getting together with the, the people of this community. So, I, I can't say enough about, about the volunteerism in this community and what it extends to. Tonight, we only honored a few groups, we talked about, uh, the police volunteers, we talked to volunteers for animals, we talked about the firefighter volunteers, and, and that's just, just a few of the groups, but, but they are so important, and, again, I've said it many times, this city, this community, this area of our county cannot get along without volunteerism. So any time that you can spare on your own to volunteer for one of these groups, I don't care what group it is, just volunteer. It will help our community immensely. And in certain cases, it relieves the staff of things that normally had to be done that they couldn't get to. So, we all have a job to do, and whether you're retired or after school, after work, any, any time you can volunteer, uh, for your community, that's what we need. We need neighborhood volunteers, volunteer, neighborhood watch. All these things help us to make and be a safe city. The, uh, I'm hoping that, uh, we can, uh, continue, we've done it for many years, support the, uh, the Habitat for Humanity, the Women's Build that's happening on the twelfth. Um, you know, some of the issues that have come up with, uh, and talking about, uh, vehicles that, uh, we're talking about, all, all we're talking about is, is, is fair regulation, and, uh, and, uh, the, the planning department and the police chief will be bringing us recommendations. We're not giving them recommendations, they're coming up with something fair in order to, to beef up the- uh, and, uh, the, the planning department and the police chief will be bringing us recommendations. We're not giving them recommendations. They're coming up with something fair in order to, to beef up the ordinances that we have and to make sure that it's fair for all the citizens and not be overreaching, ever. This last Tuesday, um, our district attorney, Larry Morris, spoke at the, um, at our Rotary Group. And he talked about something interesting, uh, of something that's, that, that's, that we get complaints about from time to time and that's mental illness. And why mental illness is not addressed in this county. And partially, the reasons that he talked about was that there's no coordination between the state, the county and local. Well, I don't know how true that is. I just know that if the district attorney mentioned it, then we need to help him in every way that we can, make sure that there is some kind of one-stop shopping, or not one-stop shopping, but one-stop for someone who is in need of some kind of mental help. And we need to do everything possible that we can in order to ensure the mental fitness of our citizens. I mean, we have, we have some who, who desperately need help, but through different agency regulations, they're not able to get help. And it makes it tough for our police and fire department. It makes it tough for the individuals who are asking that we help these individuals. And so I'm going to stay in contact with our, um, with, with Mr. Morris and the DA and to find out, because just sentencing them to some kind of time or jail time because of the acts that they commit is not curing their ills. So we want to be compassionate. We want to help whoever we can, but we really want to get them the help that they need. And I want our citizens to know that we're not turning a blind eye to these individuals when they call and the citizens call the police department, ask for assistance because someone is not acting in a normal fashion or they're a danger to themselves or others. So I'm going to stay in contact with, uh, with Mr., with Mr. Larry Morris and see what we can do to find out more about what he's talking about, about the unification of those three agencies. And to make sure that we are all working together to help. And I see our supervisor here this evening and I'll stay in touch and whatever I find out, I'll communicate to you, Mr. O'Bannon. So with that, if there are no other comments, I would like to adjourn this meeting at 8:07.